Hello, David. Are you? Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order at nine oh one. And I've asked Commissioner Curtis to open us in our opening prayer. You will please rise and stand.
Father, we just thank you that we can come here today and just thank you for life. You know, we tag every, every prayer with forgiveness where we fail you, but I just want to start with that today, Lord. Just, um, we ask for your forgiveness, Lord, and I do. I've been with the road crew this week, so I just pray that you forgive me from where I fail you, Lord, and today I just ask God that we be at peace with you and one with you, Lord, and one with one another and the people that we serve, Lord, and that your will would be done and all that we do today and that you'd be glorified through it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. All right. Place is American flag. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a legal public or which stands one engine under God and in this world with their receipt and justice for all.
Polite and place the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. Want to say under God, one and in this world. Thank you. You made me see that. All right, I'll call a meeting to order and announce we do have a quorum. All the commissioners and myself are present. Are there any general announcements? Okay, if there's not any other, any public comments? Uh, Mr. Reese, you want to wait until the? Yeah, I need you to wait until, uh, our guest is here. So, uh, we'll go ahead and do that, uh, on item. Item number four, I'm going to skip for right now. We're going to come back to it. There's some technical issues. I gotta get set up for our, our presentation on Zoom. And I don't have that link yet, so, uh, we'll move to item number five, public hearing, uh, to discuss all matters pertaining to the implementation of traffic control measures on Van Zant County Road forty-five hundred per Transportation Code, section two-five-one-point-one-five-two.
Yeah, this is mine. Uh, I brought this up, I don't know, thirty, forty-five days ago. Uh, this is the, the road that door control is on in Ben Wheeler. Um, our barn is on this road and also door control and they're right, they're right across the street from each other. And no accidents have happened. Um, yeah, I hope it never do, but it, it's getting pretty congested in there with our trucks coming in there and then it seems like door control hires ten employees a week. It's getting pretty congested. And we would like to, uh, try to, uh, implement some kind of safety on this, safety signs or whatever we gotta do on this road to prevent anything from happening. Uh, I think, does anybody here from door control? Uh, do y'all have any ideas on what y'all wanted to do? I mean, this, y'all, y'all can speak in this now.
Sure, absolutely.
Can you introduce yourself?
Uh, yes, I am Sean. Right, we're door controls.
Okay.
Uh, yes, the best employees reach out to our human protection department, their door controls about the level of traffic going down that. There's two, there's two companies that are down on that old top road. You got, uh, door controls and you got more control services. Well, there were services on that old road that, that this is.
A DH pace.
There you go. Um, so we both share primarily the only two uh, businesses on that little road up there. But these, you know, the gentleman over here on the right is Kentucky Rob. We are hiring quite a few individuals. There's about fifty plus cars that are parked on the west side of the road with all four patrols. Um, we were just trying to, trying to figure out if there's any options to, you know, painting crosswalk, asking the signs of. But there are a number of parts of people in the hood, white. Um, part regularly. So we just, we'll be trying to get an idea of what our options are, see what we can do to keep our policy safe.
And Tony, is there a? I guess it's for you, Tony. Is there any regulations on what we can or can't do, like signs or, uh, they mentioned, you know, painting like a, uh, a yellow or white crosswalk across the road, but I don't know what the, the legal ramifications are on that.
So this is, that's county, but, uh.
Right, it's a county road.
I'll, I'll have to see, sure.
I think I remember ours was saying that we couldn't, that speed by the sun and the brothers and stuff like that, but I don't think we're gonna say. Get the crosswalks.
Uh, that, that's why it's supposed to be you. Road, I'm just gonna, can't do that, but as far as, uh, maybe a traffic light or flashing yellow line or something of that nature, I think you should end that, but I need to verify that for sure.
I don't think we need to, I don't think we need a light. We just need something to, uh, and y'all can tell me if you disagree. We just need something to, uh, get their attention to be aware, say, you know, that, to, to slow down.
What, what about if you just put pedestrian crossing signs right in there?
Well, that's.
You know what I'm saying?
That's what, uh.
I would, I, I would, I would like, if it was me, I would like to have that yellow or white wall across there, plus them pedestrian crossing signs, and I think that would probably make a big difference.
And that's kind of what I was thinking was, you know, we just paint a white or a yellow strip across there, put a sign up, and then those people who are parking across the street walk across that white line.
Yes, right. Everything I understand, anything that we can do to really highlight back at people, I've walked, I've walked across the street both in the mornings and in the afternoon.
It's, it's three times a day. It's morning, lunch, and afternoon. There's a bunch of them.
About two hundred and seventy employees and also the individual authority going across the street for, um, right, at lunchtime is another time.
So, Tony, I guess I need to, I guess I know what I can't, cannot paint a strip across the county road. Are we, are we, if something happens, are we liable? Uh, you know, I don't want that to happen, but yeah, let's get to figure out what we can and can't do.
Right, so things like a traffic, you know, speeding sign or speed limit or no street trucks, we just have to, uh, decide what we want to do and vote on it, Commissioner Ford.
Uh,
It's basically, if you're gonna, if it's a regu, if it's regulatory, there's a standard of signage that you have to put up and different things, but I think the Commissioners Court, uh, did you put the information in the binder? The, the stuff that goes with this subject? I mean, like the.
No, this is just gonna be a.
It wasn't a previous binder.
Yeah. This is, this is the first public hearing and then when we decide what we want to do, Tony will go and look, make sure what we can do, then I'm gonna come back.
I was reading something last night, like there was some information in there. I, I don't know who put it in there, y'all.
I didn't.
And they highlighted it. It's like, but it was, um.
So I was, my plan was just to discuss it today and then take action um, on another day when we figure out what we can and cannot.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so I guess is that okay with y'all if we, if we have the signs or we, or we paint a strip, just do something and then I'll be good with y'all?
For control standpoint, this, we're just, we're just trying to, we're just trying to, yeah, it's just a highlight situation of pain. We have ideas, sure, but we, we just don't know what rules and regs that you can and cannot do. So we're just trying to bring it up to everyone's before we hear from our spoken, uh, options. Yes, signage, paint, flash lights of some sort would be, would be, anything would be great.
Okay.
Well, anything else?
That's all I got. I guess we just kind of need to.
All right.
Wait on Tony to figure out what we can and can't do.
All right, I'm gonna close this public hearing at nine eleven. And we will now move to item number six, discuss and consider implementation of traffic control measures on Van Zant County Road forty-five hundred per Transportation Code, section It's, we're just gonna table that.
Yeah, I think we'd table that and then, uh, when we find out what we, what we want to do and can do, we'll come back to this.
How about this? How about this, Brandon? Rather than waiting, uh, what if, what if we, um, I think everybody, I'm certainly in agreement to, to uh, paint a crosswalk sign across there and, uh, put signs up. So why don't we pass that today pending, uh, you know, if it's a void because, uh, Mr. Acosta says you can't do it, then it's void. Doesn't matter whether we've agreed to it or not. I think we don't waste today's opportunity. Let's go ahead and, uh, you know, and, and make the motion to, eh, put in, put in the, uh, the paint and the signage, um, pending the, uh, outcome of Mr. Acosta's review. And then move forward with it if, if, uh, if our attorneys say that it's the right thing to do.
Okay, you make that motion?
I do make that motion if, eh, but I.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. Uh, uh, I approve the motion that we'll, we'll, uh, paint a crosswalk across the road, put a, uh, pedestrian sign up there pending it's legal.
I'd second that motion.
All right, motion is made. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. All right, item number seven, discuss and consider approval of Champ's Corner subdivision plot located on Van Zant County Road twenty-seven oh-two in precinct two.
Uh, Judge, would you, I, I think Mr. Anderson's, uh, with us, would you prefer to go back to number four and?
Uh, yeah, before, that, that'd be fine for me and then we'll go forward. All right, we will go back to item number four. Uh, I still have to get, uh, um, which is discuss and consider authorizing County Judge sign a resolution approving assignment of private activity bond authority to Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs in conjunction with the East Texas Housing Finance Corporation. And I know, Mr. Reese, do you want to, uh, address this now or?
Sure.
Okay. Hit the comment.
Thank you, uh, great commissioner, my commissioner, my name is Bob Reese. I'm resident in precinct four and I live in Van Zant County for thirty-two years currently involved in as an associate broker in the real estate. Uh, I was previously appointed to serve on the East Texas Housing Finance Corporation Board representing Van Zant County back in twenty twenty-four. And once I got involved in that and learned a lot more about it and requested information about this program, I came and testified before y'all when you're considering this resolution, uh, the previous commission for considering this resolution in twenty twenty-four. I did speak out against the resolution. Uh, and it goes back to a number of things. Number one, what is the fundamental purpose of government? Um, I'm for conservative. I do believe that there's fundamental things that government fostered for. County government particularly is infrastructure and safety. Those are the primary things. This program, um, although it can be considered a good program for some folks, um, as I, uh, went deeper into it and looked for transparency about it, I found it lacking. Requested minutes of meetings that were held by the, uh, total board, which consists of seventeen member counties, two representatives from each county, which is approximately thirty-four people. Um, and I was unable to get copies of the extent of the meeting minutes that I requested, including those that appointed an executive committee uh, allegedly that would then be responsible for carrying this out because it was according to what I was told, it was difficult to get a forum of the thirty-four people together to discuss this whole matter. Well, I know that during the time that I served, although it was brief in twenty twenty-four, I did not receive any notices of any of this during that time, but not upheld any, but I received no notices. Uh, when I agreed to serve on the committee, it was, uh, in good faith to participate, I understood what it meant to participate. So I know that you all have, uh, been very concerned about transparency in government. Um, it's been brought up here a number of times, Commissioner's Court, and y'all are very open to transparency. I did not feel like this particular entity was providing the transparency that would give me comfort to say all this has been done in order. So I also went back and researched again with local lenders, what programs are available. If you look at the statistics on this information and the charts that Mr. Anderson will probably uh, presenting here in a few minutes, this was a thirty-five million dollar bond request covering seventeen counties. That averages two million dollars in loans per county. Averages, but you've got Smith County and other counties that are much larger than Van Zant. But the statistics shown on the graph showed, um, eight loans made in Van Zant County. It doesn't say what that time period was. I'm just making assumption it was twenty twenty-four. Uh, but eight loans totaling about a million, uh, seven hundred thousand, I believe, so right on the statistical information of two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar average sales price uh, per loan made for this program. Well, in checking with lender, uh, again yesterday verifying what I did in twenty twenty-four, there are loan programs available to assist first-time homebuyers, down payment assistance, and I'll go beyond even what this program does. Um, I just do not think it's something Van Zant County needs to be involved in. I think it's, excuse me, but a potential waste of your time. I think the free market can address it just fine. And, uh, therefore I'm really just, uh, supportive. Any questions, guys?
All right. Thank you. All right, uh, is Richard?
Yes, Judge, we're here.
You're here, okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and, and, uh, oops, I got to go. I don't find it, share on the screen. Oops. How do I get this to go up? All right, you're on.
Yes, sir.
This is, uh, former county judge, Richard Anderson, who is, uh, uh, in charge of the, uh, uh, East Texas Housing Finance Corporation.
Thank you, Judge Reese. Judge Reese and members of the court, uh, it's an honor to be before you today. I'd like to address some of the concerns that Mr. Reese had. I think number one, uh, the information that he was citing from was prepared by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Uh, that was provided to him last, also provided, uh, to a member of this court uh, this past week, which has been circulated. So I'm glad that he found the information illustrative uh, because he was citing numbers from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Uh, this is a public-private partnership. It is sponsored by the State of Texas. Uh, we have been asked to participate because we are a regional housing finance corporation. Van Zant County joined this in nineteen ninety-one, some thirty-four years ago. And, uh, the, uh, risen corporation was formed in nineteen eighty-one. It was formed because we're able to do things together that any, any single county could not do alone. Uh, can we have the next slide, please, Judge?
Again.
You'll see, these are some of the benefits of it. These are local HFCs and I, I can concur with, uh, Mr. Reese on one point. The, the, the counties are typically not vested with authority to help uh, first-time homebuyers or homebuyers in any fashion, really. Uh, because of limited jurisdiction of the court, uh, the legislature and the constitution basically say it's, it's limited jurisdiction, so it's, it's not coextensive with what your interests might be. But the HFC enable the county to assist first-time homebuyers. It's a role, you know, the counties typically don't play, but East Texas Housing Finance Corporation helps them play. Next, please. These are some of the active housing finance corporations around the state. You can see most of these are in metropolitan areas. Uh, in fact, um, well, you've got Houston in the lower right, uh, Brownsville, Austin, San Antonio, Dallas-Fort Worth Metro and El Paso. So up here in, in the upper north, uh, upper right quadrant would be the seventeen counties from East Texas Housing Finance Corporation, which go from the westernmost, Van Zant, that's your county, down to Angelina or Lufkin and back up to Pinola and Jefferson Marshall, Longview, Tyler and, and that area. Uh, so we, we are literally by banding together, we are able to play in the same league uh, that the larger cities are. Next slide, please. Some of the benefits. State assigned volume cap is intended for your community, is utilized in your community. So the, this is thirty-five million that will be reserved for East Texas area. And, uh, without that reservation, you will have to stand in line and compete with everyone else. I liken it to, you're looking for admission into a theater and you've got a general admission or reserve seat. This gives us a reserve seat up to thirty-five million dollars. The, the third item on the left, mortgage credit certificates, a mortgage credit certificate is available to assist with to the tune of about two thousand dollars annually, uh, which takes the farm tax credit on that. That's in addition to number one, the lower rate. And those lower interest rates as of this morning were between five point five and five point seven five percent on a thirty-year fixed rate mortgage. That's substantially less than the conventional mortgage rate. Anywhere from two to five percent of down payment and closing cost assistance. And again, the mortgage credit certificates. These are not something that we created. These are something that the State of Texas, the TDHCA and the IRS have created. We're simply trying to take advantage of these for the benefit of your people. Next slide, please. Some of the data with respect to averages, uh, average home loan amount, you can see to right at two hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and thirteen for purchase price. Uh, average household income about fifty-five, six thousand, six hundred and six. And those are, those are adjusted numbers. It's not adjusted gross, but the income is actually some higher than that for the family. And typically, as you see, this is two point three-five, uh, persons. Uh, down at the bottom, you've got your, the sink family, uh, new home existing and your male female breakdown. That's an interesting stat. Uh, and average FICO score is six seventy-two. Now that. Four, and remember that, that the interest, these interest rates vary as the market varies. So the, the Federal Reserve dropped the basis point, uh, the Federal Reserve dropped to ten basis, basis point by twenty-five bips, twenty-five basis points in September. And they're calculated to go two to three more rate cuts this year and next year. So we will see declining interest rates. So those numbers that I gave you, the five point five to five point seven five, uh, with a low probability will be reduced. The, the TDHCA will issue right at, uh, a billion dollars in loans, uh, under this program. And this will be a, a part of it. You'll see in this county breakdown here. Uh, Van Zant County does in fact have about, you know, almost one point eight million. So it's a player in this program. You know, it's, it's, I found some of the comments curious that Mr. Reese made with respect to, you know, no interest, sure, you know, this is something that, that private industry can do. Well, this is Van Zant County, second from the bottom. That is Van Zant County's participation in this program. In this program, repeat. So all we're doing is enhancing the ability of Van Zant County to participate in this program at a larger, to a larger extent than it is already with.
Over what time period, Mr. Anderson? Over what time period did that represent those eight loans?
Uh, all we have is the interest rate on that, uh, which they, you saw was six point four uh, percent. So, you know, I mean, this is an aggregate number for Van Zant. And, and we'd, all we have is the averages. You'll see from a, a later slide in this picture.
That's a.
Beginning quarterly reports that we will share with you showing where these loans are originated, how much they are, what are the demographics, what are the income levels and so forth. We'll be getting that from the state on a quarterly basis and of course that'll be shared, uh, with you. Next slide, please.
Mr. Anderson, before we go on, can I ask you a question on that last slide? I don't know if we can hear you. Mr. Anderson, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Uh, can you tell us what, uh, what was it? Tell us the.
You show eight loan count for Van Zant County on this slide here. Over what time period does that represent?
The information is that it was for the past year. Okay, this, this presentation we received back in July from the TDHCA, the TDHCA prepared this. We did not. Okay, and the East Texas Council of Governments, they furnished the information to the counties and TDHCA plugged in the loan amounts per county and the number of loans. Because EtCog has no way of knowing that, nor do we. Uh, but the, again, these are, these are Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs numbers. Mr. Scott Fletcher at TDHCA, one of their ranking people, prepared this information. Other questions? Okay, this gives you East Texas loans by city. And again, this is, while you've got the logo of EtCog, and I should mention too, the EtCog Executive Committee has gone on record as recommending this program to their member counties. Van Zant County, of course, being one of these. They've said this is a program which they can't do, but they have endorsed it at their meeting this past May. Those are the cities in there. You can see Canton, lower left. Uh, two loans in Canton, so you're gonna have, you're gonna have significant activity out from the, in the other uh, areas, but then that's, again, TDHCA numbers, loans by city. Next question? Okay, these are participating mortgage companies. One of the, uh, the leaders there was some twenty, followed by a couple of, and then a lot of the single digits going down. Now, this, these numbers are not frozen. Uh, participating lenders, my understanding is they, they can qualify with the TDHCA. And TDHCA is committed to putting, you know, some more information out there with respect to, uh, publicly advertising this program. And I'm going to recommend to our corporation, uh, they, that they also increase the level of, uh, interest by helping to promote this, uh, publicly through a website, which we're currently building, uh, and, you know, possibly other social media. Uh, but these numbers are not frozen. If there are other interested financial institutions that, you know, want to participate in this, then they will, of course, are welcomed by the TDHCA. Next, please. Some average numbers you can see over here on the lower left. You just started from the top, front. You just started from the top, from the, the very top, average household income of eighty, almost eighty seven thousand for, for fifteen loans. Uh, going, going down to a thirty seven thousand for some fifty loans. Again, this is, these are for first time home buyers, or if you haven't owned a home within the preceding three year period, you are eligible uh, for this program. And the numbers on the right just give you some average Texas salary means uh, by occupation. You can see police officers down there at seventy six and, you know, if you're anything like Harrison County, we're having problems. And of course, you're proximity to Dallas and Plano. The problem's going to be worse, but uh, we're having problems retaining sheriff deputies because once they get trained to her, they tend to want to migrate to the higher salaries. That's where it is. But uh, those are some numbers which uh, you might look at because, again, this, these are the types of individuals and occupations and income levels that the program is designed to assist. Hopefully, you know, it, it covers the base, but I mean, that's what the objective is of the state. Next, please. Okay, this is our timeline. And so basically, uh, we, we, we comply. All has been done because I mean, that's the, the purpose of the, the Housing Finance Corporation is, and yes, there are seventeen counties, and yes, there are two members of the county. And I will tell you that it is quite difficult to obtain a quorum. That's why the bylaws have been amended to provide for the executive, the executive committee under Mission Code, which is the operative document for corporate governance in Texas. That provides that the executive committee may take all action necessary and proper when the board is unable to meet. Okay? The reason for the meeting during the period that we had, but this back in July was to get this thing started because we had to comply with deadlines that had been issued by the bond review board. We are now compliant with those deadlines. And what we have to do now is to get, uh, the, there's two counties that we're still working on, Van Zant being one and Cherokee being the other. Uh, and we want to get those counties in, in the organization. If, if the counties are not going to be joining the organization or, or the program, I should say, you're already members of the organization. Then the, the organization is going to, to have to relook this because uh, this is directors are going to be reticent to forego thirty five million dollars again, because one of the two counties are not willing to participate. So, you know, hopefully the action will be favorable here today that she will stay in it because when visiting with, with the judge and Commissioner Cliff Williams last night, he explained that this is for a one year period. We're going to try it and see how it works. Uh, it's new to us because it's, it's a relatively new program. It's probably three years old. And we think that it's going to be a benefit uh, to the individual uh, property souls uh, within the East Texas Housing Finance Corporation area. We're highly recommending it uh, to the sponsor counties as is EtCog. We complied with all these, that's thirteen, we complied. Next page, please. Okay, just to recap, these are fixed rates. There are no floating rates. Down payment assistance up to is two to five percent per mortgage loan. Uh, assistance zero, there's a payable second lend, that is an option after available also. Combined with mortgage credit certificates option, that's up to two thousand dollars annual um, deduction for your income tax return, which will be on top of uh, other deductions that you might have. Uh, and property bars must meet income and property value limits, which we've already gone over. So that's rough and dirty. It's going to be a little bit more than fifty six thousand. Purchase price is going to be right at two hundred and thirteen. Okay, uh, again, the partnership. This is TDHCA speaking. So this is not a private program, as was stated previously. This is the state of Texas that is asking us to partner with it. The TDHCA own- ownership team and the HFC introductory meeting after execution of the assignment agreement. Okay, we're just doing that now. This takes it step by step all the way down and you know, penultimate point, TDHCA provides direct marketing to realtors and lenders within applicable jurisdiction. So they will be helping with that and we will be helping them. Next slide, please. This is just, uh, it explains a HFC gift fund participation. It's, is, is available to gift funds provided by the HFC enable more home buyers to qualify supplementing down payment, closing cost assistance. Uh, the executive committee has really not looked at that at this point in time. Uh, but I, you know, I think it's something we can look at depending upon how this first year goes as to whether or not we want to look at expanding it. Next slide, please. Okay, this, this is what I covered just briefly earlier. The assignment partner received quarterly reporting requirements. And again, this will be the original assignment amounts will be thirty five million. Percentage utilized date, uh, local detail reporting loan type status, demographics. Vendor, which lenders are participating and where fees due to the HFC, there is, there is a fee attended to this about four, four point seven five basis points. That's zero, zero, four, seven, five percent. Uh, and that's to cover basically administrative costs and plus uh, the expenses of the corporation. Next slide, please. Okay, I think we've covered most of this. So full on probably be credited power, volume capitalization. Yeah, we've already mentioned the fact that the TDHCA, the, the reason they're able to do this at no cost and expense to us is because they issue so many bonds. Economy scale are, are brought to bear. And it would cost us, you know, again, between a million and a million two per year. To, I mean, per, per issue, I should say, to issue bonds on this, on this magnitude. So that gives you a good overview of the program. Now let me talk with you about, one thing that concern I looked at this program, these programs like this in nineteen eighty, is what's the financial impact upon uh, the county government? Uh, and I can tell you, as I think I've heard the term conservative, you know, bannered in here. I mean, I, I balanced twelve county budgets and three state budgets and every one was balanced. Uh, so I understand that. And if this program were to do anything to jeopardize the financial condition of any sponsoring entity or the corporation itself, I would be the first to raise a flag at this neither of those things. You see the resolution before you, which has been provided, one, therefore, a bit resolved by the commissioner's court. Specifically approves the assignment, reservation TDHCA. And I'm going to read the second paragraph. I should just take a sense, the approval herein, given a solely pursuant to chapter thirteen seventy two of Texas Government Code is not to be construed as any undertaking by the sponsor, that's Van Zant County. And it is expressly acknowledged that any bonds issued by the TDHCA using the reservation would be obligations only of the TDHCA and shall never constitute an indebtedness or pledge within the meaning of any constitutional or statutory provision of the corporation. It's Van Zant County or any other municipal or political subdivision corporation, state of Texas. And any such obligation shall never be paid in whole or in part out of any funds raised to be raised by the taxation or other revenue of ration Van Zant County or any municipal or political corporation or subdivision therein. That gentleman is concisely uh, what the program is about. Uh, it is no obligation uh, to Van Zant County or any other member sponsors. Uh, I can tell you if it were, then, you know, I probably wouldn't be here. So as a practical matter, uh, this has been, it's been approved by our financial professionals. We're represented by the former Fulbright Jaworski Firm out of Houston, uh, Norton Rose Fulbright, uh, Hilltop Securities, which has been in business seventy five years here in the state of Texas. They're national. Uh, they have recommended it. East Texas Executive Committee has recommended it. Your executive committee has recommended it. And I, I did have to speak with Miss Cindy Malouf yesterday. And she told me that she had medical, a, a medical appointment this morning, but she is in favor of it. So apparently you've got a split delegation. I'll be pleased to answer any questions that you might have in these respects on anything that I've touched upon or anything else that might be on your mind. And thank you for the courtesy of uh, hearing this out. Judge?
Are there any questions? So wha- what is the role of the county if this is adopted? What, 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 how do we play a part in this?
Okay, that's a fair question. The, the bond review board and their legal beagles have basically said since the individual counties in Van Zant County's case in nineteen ninety one, since you banded together to give the East Texas Housing Authority to issue bonds for you, then if they're going to assign it, then you need to approve the action of the ETHFC. Okay, that's, that's all we're here for. Uh, you've just got to say, okay, it looks good to us. Uh, we approve of what you're doing. We want to have these benefits available for our taxpayers. And you go ahead and do it as long as it doesn't obligate us. And that's exactly what the resolution that I read you says. It doesn't obligate you. Uh, but it's assigning this to the TDHCA where the TDHCA, the state agency can help the individual residents of Van Zant County and the rest of the jurisdiction population. So this is a good question. Other questions? I might sum up with this. So I mean, you're going to, you probably won't be hearing from us until next year. It's, this program goes, you know, as expected, which I think will be positive. So, um.
Mr. Anderson, I have, I have questions. If you, I, I just wanted to make sure everybody else had their opportunity. Do you have just another moment?
Uh, yes, sir.
What meetings occurred in, in, uh, over the last twelve months with this, uh, with this organization?
We've had two, both of which were uh, to authorize uh, this transaction. You'll recall, we did it in twenty four.
Mr. Anderson? Yes, Mr. Anderson, if I could interrupt you there, I don't, I, I, um, I wanted to, I'm going down a particular path there. So you had two meetings over the last year, but you approved, but based on what you'd said before, you approved eight loans uh, in twenty twenty four for one point seven million dollars. Is that correct?
No, sir, that's not. We don't approve loans.
No, no, no. Yeah, but there were eight loans, there were eight loans. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that everybody understands it clearly. There were eight loans that were given for one point seven million dollars, uh, and, and those eight loans, um, but you didn't, you know, but you only had meetings regarding uh, whether or not Van Zant and these other counties would participate. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, with whom am I speaking, please? Would you identify yourself?
This Cliff Williams.
Okay, I'm sorry, Cliff. Okay, so we don't meet to do loans. Okay, all we do is we assign this authority to the TDHCA. The TDHCA sells these, go to a trustee bank. We have no custody of any of that. The realtors and the homeowners will then go to the various mortgage companies and then request a loan to buy this house or to build this house. Mostly it's going to be, you know, buying an existing home.
Can I ask you a question there, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Um, what's the, what's the need for, for a board?
Well, Van Zant County cannot assign this right directly to the TDHCA because Van Zant County has no right directly to to assign, to make these bonds, to create these bonds or to issue these bonds. It only is because of section three ninety four of the Local Government Code, which gives counties the opportunity to come together as a regional housing finance corporation and do something together that they cannot do individually. Now, if you were a large county, uh, you could do that. And we saw from the map that the metro area is, they had their own. Uh, we're one of the few regional HFCs banding together smaller counties. Uh, but Commissioner Williams, I mean, we don't, we don't need to approve loans. Okay, we don't need to approve lenders.
I, I didn't, I didn't mention, I didn't say that we were approving loans. Um, well, you, you had on your, on your slide there that there were eight loans in Van Zant County during, you know, with, for one point seven million dollars. And you indicated that it was over last year. And you're saying that another entity put this together. So what you're saying, if I, I guess I'm trying to just figure out how the program works. You need the rooftops uh, and the body count in Van Zant County in order to get uh, to get all the money available to TDHCA for this program. Is that true?
Uh, basically, Commissioner, the allocation is uh, it's predicated upon the federal allocation of a hundred and fifty dollars per person per individual within the state of Texas. So we've got a population of thirty three million. So you multiply that by a hundred and fifty and you come up right with four hundred and ninety five billion, four point nine five billion. Okay, and of that, approximately a billion is going to be issued for housing because there are other competing tax exempt issues out there. Okay, so since that, since that, you know, whatever, I mean, seventy five or eighty thousand, eighty thousand population, whichever Van Zant is at this point, I don't remember off the top of my head. Then uh, that goes to, you know, that goes to the original estimate of the allocation. Now, you know, they're not allocating to us, you know, dollars per head for the million people in East Texas Housing Finance Corporation. They're taking an estimate of what has gone on before and they're saying, okay, if there's a reservation, there's probably going to be increased activity. If there is increased activity, then these allocations could go up. Uh, if, if the allocation is not net, uh, we could expect it would go down. So, but we, we have nothing to do with the amount which they allocate to the ETHFC. Okay, that's specifically and exclusively a bond review board function. That's a state of Texas function. Uh, we, the only dog we have in that fight is we're the dogs. Okay, so, you know, we, we play by their rules and their rules are that they will dictate to us, you know, how much they're allocating to the individual jurisdiction.
So, so Van Zant's participation in this is immaterial. If they're, if they're, they just come up with a, with a number and, and make that determination. So whether we participate or whether we don't, that won't impact the number, the amount of bonds that you guys have available.
You know, I wouldn't say it's immaterial. I mean, if, you know, it, it, if, if you're not participating this time and the counties, the county, other counties can't participate without you. So I would anticipate if, if the decision is made by Van Zant County not participate, that Van Zant County, uh, that there would be a board meeting and that Van Zant County would be excluded uh, from the corporation.
Even though there's not enough people that, so the, um, so in this particular case, what you're saying is, is that there, this, this program is only available if Van Zant County uh, participates with. uh participates with the rest of the, of the other counties and that, uh, you know, you mentioned several law firms. Uh, which of those law firms receive, uh, receive payment for administration of this program?
None. This, this, this program, the assignment program is, we're sending that over to the TDHCA. The bond, bond council will not get power, our bond council will not get paid because we're not issuing bonds. We're simply delegating our authority to issue bonds to TDHCA. So Hilltop Securities is not going to get paid anything and neither is Norton Rose Fulbright. You know, I mean, so, I mean, that's.
So is, if, if I'm understanding, I'm following what you're saying. You're saying that we, the commissioners court votes to, uh, participate in, in this today and, uh, it unlocks, uh, the, this bond money, uh, available to TDHCA and no private entity, uh, benefits in any way from the administration of this because it's TDHCA that's, it's administering this program. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's basically, Cliff.
What, again, I, I just brings me back to what I said before. What is the, what do you need a board for? Why did they promise, uh, thirty years ago that Van Zant would have two seats on a board? If there's not anything that we do and there's not a board that, uh, the, the only thing that you said of substance that the board does is vote people off if they don't do what, you know, if they don't agree to participate.
Well, okay, that's, let me go back because you, the, the questions you directed were program specific. Okay, so what, what has the board done? Okay, there was a, there were two transactions in Tyler, I want to say fifteen million and twelve million in twenty-two. Okay, there were two multifamily projects back in the early two thousands and Gregg County had one multifamily program in twenty-three. I think it was twenty-three, yeah, twenty-three, uh, for about nine million over in South Longview. Those programs are developer driven. Okay, we serve as a conduit for, for the issuance of tax exempt mortgage revenue bonds. The only way that we have been able to do that recently has been through multifamily housing. And I say it's developer driven for this reason. We don't pick out the cities, the locations or the borrowers or anything else. They come to us and they say, okay, we want to buy this apartment building and rehab it or we want to build this apartment building over here. Can you help us? They will prepare a financial package and then that will be sent to the bond review board and the attorney general for their approval. And if they approve it, it comes back to us and we can issue those bonds or those tax credit certificates, low income housing tax credits to the developer to develop that housing within the individual city. The smaller, smaller counties, you know, less population base, they're not going to attract the interest in multifamily that the metro areas like, you know, Tyler with, uh, Smith County's got right a quarter of a million people or Longview with about a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty thousand people. They're not going to attract the interest that, uh, those Harrison doesn't either. So, but we are there to help with multifamily. Now, just recently, again, two years ago, the program's been around for three or four, but we have been asked to participate in single family housing, which we have been raising with TDHCA and saying, okay, look, I've got smaller counties out here. And all they're saying is that, you know, this is good for the larger counties, but it's not really good for us because they're not building any apartments here. Okay, so they've come up with this. So this is for single family housing and this is not developer driven. Okay, you make the monies available, you know, by the assignment. Your approval of the assignment enables us to assign these, uh, this authority to the TDHCA. The TDHCA sells the bonds. The individual homeowners and realtors can come to the mortgage companies and say, we want to qualify for these loans in this amount in this location. That is approved or is disapproved depending on the credit rating and so forth and so on. Those monies would be withdrawn from the trustee bank. It would be, the seller would be paid off, the borrower would execute the papers and for the next thirty years they would make the payments. So that's helping the individuals here that for the first time in a long time that we've been able to help. Again, because of the economies of scale of TDHCA. So Commissioner, I would not say that, you know, your participation is immaterial. Your participation is certainly material for the standpoint of the people that want to buy a home in your jurisdiction. Uh, you're doing a hell of a service to them. Uh, but yeah, I mean, there's some collateral benefits to the county, uh, the HFC because the HFC is going to be in the position of being able to help more people if you continue your role there. Doesn't cost you anything. Van Zant County has never paid one single penny to the East Texas Housing Finance Corporation. All you get is benefits. You can ask your auditor to go back through the numbers too to nineteen ninety-one and you'll see that's true. Other questions?
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
So we're not part of this, uh, TDHC right now, correct?
No, you are.
Yeah, we are.
You were admitted in nineteen.
I think they started in nineteen ninety, I think it's been.
Uh, we voted on October the ninth. This is the meeting minutes from October the ninth. The motion by Commissioner Cliff Williams to remove Van Zant County and no longer be a part of and deny contract seconded, uh, by Commissioner Brandon Barton, all voted in favor. So as far as we concerned, we are not part of this organization any longer. Now, they haven't, the, in order for them to drop us, they have to have a board meeting of the board members to, to drop us and that has not occurred. So according to them, they, they still consider us a member.
Okay, so that's a question.
Yeah, it's.
Uh, we're not part of it or we voted not to be part of it.
But we're still.
Yeah, we're still a part of it and that's why Van Zant County has eight people that are made loans that were, uh, that were given. Is that?
Those occurred.
I don't know. Not since October, I don't think.
Those occurred.
Before we did.
At some, some period prior to.
Gentlemen, may, may I clarify, Judge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there, there's two pools of funds available here. Okay, number one, you were right with respect to, I mean, in nineteen ninety-one, the counties came together and they agreed that Van Zant County would be a member. Okay, and that was like a marriage. Okay, and if Van Zant County wants to get out, then Van Zant County had got to come to the board to say, okay, we want out. So until that happens, under corporate law, you're still a member. Okay, that's Texas corporate law and that's according to the bylaws. That's number one. Number two, you were talking about, well, how can these loans be originated if we're not members? Okay, the TDHCA program is available statewide, okay? Pardon me. You participated in, or your realtors did, participated in that pool on a statewide basis. Okay, this is a refinement to that program because it is not, these are the reserved seats that I talked about. There's a reservation of thirty-five million that will go to the seventeen counties. Okay, that's if we go along. Now, that is totally different than the pool of money that, that, that it's going to be basically the same thing, but you don't have any reservation. You can just go out there and you compete like every, everyone else. Okay, this gives the one-up of TDHCA coming to us before it's publicly available and saying, do you want to participate on a reserve fund basis? We got that information, your executive committee said, yes, we do. And now your executive committee is coming to you and saying, okay, do you want us to participate on this? And if you don't, if you don't think this is important or a benefit to the people of Van Zant County, then, you know, I suppose that, you know, that's your, that, that's your collective wisdom, then you can say, no, we don't want to do that. And if you say that, then I think probably the rest of the counties are going to say, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll just remove you and you can, you can participate, you know, in whatever other program, but not with us.
So from what I understand, you said this from nineteen ninety-one when they voted to become a part of it. It was, did I understand you right? There was a marriage, so the only way we could get out of it is if somebody from the court appears and asks to be took out of it?
No, we just, I mean, we can send that to the board, to the board of directors. If that's your decision, if you want to stand by that decision, then, you know, we can send that to the board and the board can act on it and we can, we can move.
Well, I was going to say though, it, you said y'all had two meetings last year and I suppose that the representative from the Van Zant County was not notified for those meetings?
The meetings were of the executive committee, Commissioner.
So there wasn't a board meeting? It was just the executive board?
The, the executive committee is authorized by the state of Texas and the bylaws to act in lieu of the board of directors. I said, you asked how many meetings within the last twelve months? I said two on this issue. Okay, and I also mentioned our multifamily issues. Okay, our multifamily issues, there were at least one or two meetings for each one of those. Okay, so, but again, those were executive committee meetings because, I mean, you know, quite frankly, I, I can't get eighteen people together in my office, you know, at the drop of a hat. Because, and that, and you, now, we, we're subject to the Open Meetings Act as of May thirty-first. So you all understand that. So, you know, I mean, you've got to have a quorum present at one location and you can't be phoning in or zooming in, you know, unless you have a physical quorum available at that individual address. So we got that impediment now as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, are there any more questions? If not, thank you for your time, Judge. We appreciate it. You want, you want to hang around?
Members of the court, I, yes, I, I could, I can stay on as, there's going to be a move for a vote?
Uh, there'll be discussion on, yes.
Okay.
If you're done.
If you think that that'll be beneficial, I'll be available to answer any questions.
Uh, you're, you're welcome to say, I don't know if there'll be any questions because of the question I asked it, but you're welcome to hang around while we discuss it. All right, is there any discussion concerning?
I mean, I think in short, the, um, the, um, lack of communication is, you know, is definitely a problem. And, and I think that, uh, if you look at this program just in it, on its base level, what he's saying is TDHCA, they already make loans to people. But by participating with this, with the seventeen counties, we actually moved to the front of the line. Anybody in Van Zant County that chooses to, 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 uh, to apply to TDHCA for one of their loans. And I spoke to a, a mortgage broker yesterday and he said, it's, it's any, it's just like any other government program. You have a lot of boxes that you have to check. If you fit neatly within all of the parameters, uh, then you can make application and get some of this bond money. Perhaps that it's, it's at a lower interest rate, perhaps it's not.
Are they doing anything that the private sector ain't doing? I mean, like, it's, it's pretty competitive with the private sector, the interest rate, right?
Yeah, uh, that, that's probably the only benefit is that, that, that the interest rate may, you may be a point lower.
And they have limited funds that, so they have a, they have limited funds that are available. And by joining, we, we, we are out, we're in an allocation of.
A portion of the funds.
Thirty-five million.
TDHCA.
Thirty-five million.
That's right, that's right.
Over seventeen counties.
Which?
That's right, and it, and, and.
Which is two million, it's right at a little over two million and we used one point seven last year.
It, uh, but I don't, I'm not convinced. If they didn't have any meetings, if they were only doing multifamily, I don't know how many, uh, multifamily units the city of Canton is interested in having or the city of Will's Point or Grand Celine.
Did I understand right? They went to single, they went to single family dwellings because multifamily dwellings weren't benefit, we weren't going to use something like that. So they had to keep, to keep us interested in it, they went to a single.
Well, I think it has more to do with the interest rates. Interest rates, uh, uh, flow with the bond rates, bond rates and, and how the interest rates flow. If bond rates are high, um, those, the interest rate from, from the bond offerings, it, it's not going to benefit any single family owner because the interest rate's higher than the interest rate in the market. It, with the bond rates go down so that bonds, the interest rates are less than what's in the private sector, then single family homes would benefit. But the difference between their multifamily and the single family is multifamily is that's developer driven. Developers say, hey, I want to do this and, and here's my package. Will you give me bonds for a portion of that amount of money? They are all, they're already used to higher interest rates because that's the way, you know, the investment goes. So, um, you, you know, I, 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 I think the thing that bothers me is that we don't know what's going on. But on the other hand, it doesn't cost us anything and it doesn't, you know, it really could give the people here.
There's, there's that possibility that if you give them an advantage.
Yeah.
I'm kind of like that. It could help the people, but I'm also, you get government involved in private, you know, that's not good, in my opinion.
And, and our, and the judge, who, who is our representative to that? I guess you are.
No.
So we don't have a representative.
Uh, the two board members are Cindy Malouf and Bob Reese. But, but Mr. Reese terminated, he tendered his resignation for that. So we, we don't have one, but it doesn't matter. They can't get them together, they're not interested in getting them together, anybody. They, they can't. It, it's just too, too hard to, I think a quorum is fifty percent. I've never read the bylaws, but I believe a quorum is fifty percent. If you can't get eighteen people together out of thirty-four, that's pretty, you're not, you're not really trying, in my opinion. So there are benefits, but the things that bother me is we don't see anything. We don't, I ask, I ask folks here in my office over, if we'd been a part of this since nineteen ninety-one, how many reports have you ever seen? None.
Well, we're not vested in, in any way.
And last year.
I mean, because we don't have, it doesn't cost us anything. We don't really have representative there in it. Um, it's how the private sector, the, where the representative, representation is. So it's just one more thing that you don't know about. I'm, I've got with Brandon, it's like, I'm kind of with Brandon, like you give one government involved in one more thing, like. I mean, are the other people there going to benefit if, if it wasn't available, like, if it wasn't available?
Yeah, the people could still go to TDHCA and, and if they, you know, check all the boxes, they can still qualify. But the deal is this, is that Van Zant County's name is on it, but we don't receive any financial reporting for what's going on with it. And I think that this court before has said that they want to see some financial reporting for the things that we're, that we're involved.
I'd agree with that.
So.
We want to.
Yes.
Nevermind, so we're, we will see if a financial reporting, even though we don't have any money vested in it.
But we're part of, if, if we're, if we're part of the organization, you know what's going on.
They need us for that allocation.
Right, I mean, I think we have the right to know what's going on and we're part of the organization.
I'm with you on that.
Judge?
How does, how does it? We'll go both ways. Does it help us if we join? Does it hurt us if we join? Does it help the people if we join? Does it hurt the people if we join?
I think it could help the people.
Uh, I believe the issue has to do with, uh, uh, complying with federal regulations you got on because the. Regulations in God, because the organization has not been transparent with the board members on what's been going on. There's been no communication to the board.
Do we have to vote on that?
Um, well, we have to decide if we're gonna vote. I don't understand how we can vote unless we go back and, and rescind our, uh.
Divorce papers?
Yeah.
It's a filing, it's a filing, it's not, you know, we can, we can drop without prejudice.
We're just separating.
Yeah.
It's not official. So if, if we say we vote to approve this. I think we're all in agreement. We want to know what the hell's going on, so how do we? Put that in the notes that, you know, if you don't give us. What we want as far as your, your data, then we'll separate divorce again.
It's a one-year commitment, so we vote to participate in today. In one year, we can say, you know what, you haven't lived up, we still have no representation on the board. We have no representation on the executive board. You guys can go in and make decisions. And you don't have to tell us anything clearly because it's, that's what's happened for thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three years. And we don't have any financial understanding of what's going on with it. We're just lending you our body count in Van Zant County so you can get more money appropriated for the program.
So we could. Join this in one year and if they uphold. You know, the transparency that, that we want, we can rejoin next year. If they don't, we can. Get out, correct?
I need another two weeks to think about it, because I don't know all that, I don't know what, I don't know what I think about it right now. Like, it seems harmless and then.
Well, would it, would it be beneficial if we make a contingent on, like, they put somebody from Van Zant County on the, on the executive committee?
Well, I'm not, I don't want on the executive committee either.
Well, I think it would.
I'm not volunteering for that. That's what your point is, like, I don't.
I mean, let's say they put you on the executive committee and then they decide they're going to have all the decisions made by the elite executive committee of three people. Uh, so, I mean, that's what bothered, that does still bother that they said, you know what? You join us nineteen ninety-one, they say, you join us, we're gonna give you two seats. And then later on, they say, you know what, it's too hard working with you, uh, we're gonna be run by an executive committee.
They can have a one-year trial. If we, if, if we want or, or not.
I'm not voting on today.
You might, they, uh. And I, I'm not sure, but I believe they have an October fifteenth deadline. Is what, what it said in the letter that was sent to us.
Yeah, deadlines are deadlines. Judge Anderson, what, what's the, what, what's the deadline for when we need to have a response back to you on our participation with this?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um. There, the deadline is November fifteenth. We were trying to get into it early. Uh, Grace, Grace Will Patterson is, I mean, Mr. Williams, Commissioner Williams will understand that, the significance of that firm. Uh, they're in Austin and they're, they're the bond counsel for the T D H C A. Those are the numbers of deadlines that they are giving us. Uh, I, I might mention, there was some discussion earlier that you're not getting any reports. On it, the, the, the number of mortgages in Van Zant County that was referred to on page six or seven of the PowerPoint. I just received those. We don't get those. Okay, now, if you look over on page nineteen of your PowerPoint. You will see that there will be quarterly reports of activities in all the counties. That will be provided. So it's not like this information is available out there that, that, you know, we're hiding it from you. We don't get the information either. You know, and I'm sure probably the mortgage lenders don't. So, but this is, if you want to get, if you want to get more information, I mean, this is a way to do it. But, because if you're participating statewide, then they're not gonna, they're not gonna circulate this to every county in the state. They're only gonna circulate to counties that have executed the assignment.
Even up till now.
Bob, you were on the board or you were on the.
Yes, sir.
Were you ever contacted or do you know, uh, know what, what was going on?
No, sir, not, not really, not to any extent. Uh, we'll share with you though, September the thirteenth. At, in answer to my request for minutes.
This is twenty-four, right?
Twenty-four minutes and bylaws and so on. I was sent by Mr. Anderson's legal assistant. The amended and restated bylaws, the East Texas Housing Finance Corporation Executive Minutes dated June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. And a list of the board of directors. And I responded two days later and said, thank you for sending this. I did also request copies. Of the notices and meetings which were not provided. Please provide those for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. I would like to add a request for copies of minutes that appointed the executive committee. Any board meetings in twenty twenty-three and any amendments to the bylaws with signature pages and dated. I never received a response to that, hence two weeks later, I sent my resignation. To, uh, Judge Anderson and copied his legal assistant and Judge Reese. Uh, and said, I am not comfortable with the communication procedures and operation of the organization. As it especially relates to the recent actions on, on that time, the forty million dollar bond. So. I was just not comfortable with the circumstances.
It's except for the information that was sent to you last week regarding the action of the executive committee, correct?
That's correct.
Well, doesn't, doesn't appear that we are ready to try to vote on this. Uh, but I don't know what the next course of action is. Do we need another meeting, a, a public hearing perhaps?
I think probably, uh, at least a public hearing.
Okay. Well, you know, I mean, if we have a public hearing. We're gonna have one person speak.
Well, there's, there's a second one that will come and speak. Okay. The, the other board member.
Oh, Cindy, okay.
Yes.
And there could be some, uh, mortgage lenders in the community that, uh, are aware of this, that may be interested, so.
So do we need to table this?
Yes, I, I would suggest that's, that's what we do for right now.
I'm making motion we table this.
Second.
All right, motion made, second, uh, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, like signs. Thank you very much, Richard. For, for, Judge, we're still working on it, okay?
Okay, and thank each of you.
All right, moving on to, uh, we did, we did six, number seven, is that correct?
Yes, number seven.
Discuss, consider approval of Champ's Corner subdivision plat located in Van Zant County Road twenty-seven oh two in precinct two.
Uh, Judge, may I be excused?
You may.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, members.
Champ's Corner is, uh, in, uh, precinct two. All, there's four lots. Associated with this, uh, each one of them has county road access. We received all the letters from the utilities, uh, water, septic, indicating that the utilities will be available. And since all four of these, um, lots are over an acre and all have county road access. Um, I'd make a motion to approve this subdivision.
So, yeah.
All right, motion made, second, are there any other, uh? Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion passed. Uh, item number eight, discuss and consider request for a variance on a replat of Albright addition. Nine and ten located in Van Zant County Road thirty-seven twenty-four in precinct three.
Yes, Judge, this is mine and, uh. The, if, if they, if we do this variance, it would be putting. One of their lots, uh, landlot.
Well, explain what, what variance it is or request.
They're, they're wanting to do away with, the way I understand it, uh, basically a road with a cul-de-sac on it. And if they do away with that, then, uh. It, it lands lots the southern corner, which is track number eight on it. And. Also two, if they. Do this, am I, am I right? Then the, the, the road that's there now, which is just grass. It's not really much of a road, uh, will have to be, will be required to be brought up to today's specification. Oh.
So, is a private road?
Yeah.
Okay, it's not a county road.
No, it's a, it's a private road coming off of a county road, which is thirty-seven twenty-four. And, but my biggest concern is that landlocking that back southern lot. Uh, I don't think we can do this.
So it's, it's gonna remain a separate lot? It's not gonna be joined? I mean, I looked at it, that's not, it's not gonna, it's not gonna join? I don't know how you can do that, I don't know how you can, you can't.
I don't think, I mean, because if you do away with that road, then they don't have any access back there to that, that back lot. The, the, there's two lots to the, basically the right of the road, I guess, that are flagged. Lots. And that road, the way, the way the, the, the map is on it, that road is partially on. The back flag lot and partially on the. Property at the front. On the north side of it. Yeah, I guess you can.
Sure.
Yes.
Can you tell us who, who you are?
Who owns the tracks.
Okay.
We're the ones.
You may speak, go ahead.
Very much. And they all present another little rendering that's essentially the same.
Sure, that'd be helpful to me.
Yeah.
I like pictures. Do you have?
I didn't.
This is the yellow circle on the bottom. And, and that's lot eight, which is what he was talking about, that would right now, today. Uh, should become rent lots. If we, um, were to dissolve the private road. So, um, my family bought these traps of land as well as Jessica, a great family friend owns the track eight. I'm currently in the process of doing the same thing for track eight, getting, um. Approval from track seven to bypass through and do, um, somewhat of a flag, but it looks like it. Um, won't be all the way on one side of, of lots that, so. Ultimately, the private road was imposed without the constituents' understanding. They told, they, the developers told the property owners, you have to dedicate thirty foot on each side. So that we'll have a road through here someday. And they've both been using it as a dirt driveway for, uh, since the nineties. And, um, or before even some of it, uh. They didn't realize what a private road means, which is now gonna cost them about a hundred thousand dollars if they want to do anything with their property. Um, unless everybody can get tied to the county road. So today. Um, I know what we were doing, working with the engineer, um, county engineer Brian Abbott, right? So we were just trying to kick rocks and figure out the best way, honestly, to take care of my family first and then when I help the neighborhood. Best I can. I'm third generation realtor and, um. Owner of, of our firm and, you know, just do all I can to help the world. And truly, the cost for that private road build out, um, outweighs the value of the property. So that was improperly imposed upon consumers. Um, just so y'all know that, I expect we'll be back here within six months, a year, working on, um. Literally trying to get that private road dissolved, so the property owners get their land back. And, you know, they have driveways and access to the county road. So I think the waiver thing is probably not our best idea today because of lot eight. Um, and again, I'm working with Miss Jessica who owns that now to figure out what's best for her elderly mom.
Today, we're here about a replat?
Yeah, so the next agenda item on your list is the replat of nine and ten, which is ours. On the top side, what you have in front of you and what we brought laminate fancy copies of is three tracks. And I'm trying to help the family with estate planning. And things have changed. One of the three brothers have dropped out, so what I put in front of you today. Is what we asked Bison Survey to retraft, which is only two lots, six and a half acre in the back. Um, and like three point one or whatever, still fully abutting that county road. Um, and that will leave just the back six and a half acre track utilizing the. Um, private road that we hook to dissolve someday and this Jessica, so. Only two lots use that driveway. Um, everybody else has immediate current access to the county road. Uh, so I think that's everything that's important. We made sure we got all the well-served letters and everything that you did.
I got a question. So you're saying there's only two lots that uses that road? Would that be the, the ten C and eight?
Correct. Although we're dropping C altogether now.
It's gonna become.
With your approval, we would come back with a new set. For two lots, ten A and ten B, I think they are.
Ten C and ten B would become one lot?
Right, six and a half.
Ten A would stay the same.
Correct, essentially. It was a little more square, original, now it's a little more rectangle, but same amount of area, yes, sir. So we thought by making it a six and a half acre lot, only one driveway request, maybe, um. That would be more simple for y'all. Although again, I want to call your attention, that developer was a little sneaky, sliding that private road in on, you know, more for folks with mobile homes.
When was that developed?
Um, ninety-one, is that right? Eighty-six, actually, it was in the eighties. I have that.
No, that's.
It was late, my family's been there since like eighty-eight. Um, and like I said, they're just little old bubble homes and semi-hardened areas, you know, drag home a slab of wood a week and build what you can with it and.
Where's the private road right now?
Private road is the, all the way on the right. Right here inside, it says county road three, seven, two, four, all the way on the right hand side. This is the county road.
Yeah, where's the private road?
The private road is this whole cul-de-sac.
So it's fixed both sides.
So it lays on, yeah, it lays on all of that, uh, property there.
Correct.
But the surveyor didn't include it in his survey?
Well, that's what I remember with Bison, uh, so Brian Abbott went back to Bison and. As I got the first original plat.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and firstly, said everything was okay and then, um. I don't remember, maybe with your books here, um, question, but Brian Abbott just had, um, I didn't catch that was a private road.
Oh, yeah.
He just, on the first pass, right? Um, and all I'm doing is giving him the old nineteen eighty-six little, you know. Blurry plat from your books, um, but it's just old, so. It was nothing intentional, so Bison knew they had to redo it anyway after we got your direction, right? What y'all want us to do, so we all decided to just monkey it around, bring you a new one today with just two traps. And then make sure we get a pretty fully functional and show all the easements and everything that you want, um. When we bring that back later today or tomorrow.
So if you, if you get rid of this private road, um, with the cul-de-sac on it. Um, you're, you're, and I know we're talking about this in the future, but, but right now, your thought is that you're gonna do. Uh, an easement through there, so what you're gonna, the variance, you're gonna be asking for the road. You, you saying, I don't want to, we don't want to come, we don't, because of the value. Uh, we don't want to put in the full road there, we just want an easement to go across perhaps Alejandro Zuniga's.
Yeah, so we're working that out right now. Um, and Alejandro's wife is Jessica's sister.
Oh.
Um, and so they, they weren't the best friends, but they're, uh, we're working on. Um, and so they weren't the best friends, but they're, uh, we're working on it. I think we're gonna be able, I'm confident we can get it done. I never know how long some of these things will take you.
Well, and, and even if you can't get it there, you still, you can put the easement on, you know, on, uh, on the north side of that line and go across your, uh, your part of ten C, or what would be ten B.
Ah.
And, and, uh, you know, and ninety degree into, to, to track date, if you just wanna get it. Provided everybody's in agreement with that.
I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna be in agreement with, with this variance until.
This one is here?
There's other.
Just, I, I think she's said we don't need the variance.
Yeah, we're not out there. Yeah, but, but I mean, that's, that's what we're looking at here is, is a variance to abandon that road. I don't want, excuse me, I don't want to abandon that road right now. And it end up with that property back there landlot, whether it be for a month or six months, because I don't know this, I don't know this lady.
We're not, we're not, we're not talking about abandoning it. I was asking about.
That's what, yeah, I understand that, but, but I can't, I can't go on good faith of given what we have here on our paper.
We can't abandon a private road. It's not any of our business.
Well, if she's replating everything, that road's there.
Yeah.
So.
So what, uh?
Hold on, just, excuse me, Keegan. Yeah.
Since that was some traditional subdivision, that road has to be abandoned here. Has to be abandoned. Everyone attached to that road, everyone has to know this on a few blocks. That he knows around here. It has to be abandoned, has to be regone by everyone, and that has to happen first. Or since she's talking about the private road, it has to be brought up to today's specs. That's in our regs. This picture that's your paper here, thi- this has nothing to do with the land. Because I don't have my, I don't have large paper. I found Google search says eight, two lots. And it still includes private road right here, so it still has clients. We don't know these others who land on it. No, I see, as hundreds of you, I ran into a couple of them and said, absolutely not, I hate her, I will call them. And, and so you have the letters and everything, point to the two hundred eighty that she knows about us. That she's approved of.
Right, so.
Yes.
This variance really.
It's not ready? You're saying, on the replat?
Right.
Yeah, no, no, no.
On the replat.
Okay.
My request was, again, early on, we weren't sure what was gonna be appropriate, wanna make sure we got on the agenda, um, to make you aware of the private road and Alejandro, who has, runs to John McHenry Road, is the only one that is, if he still worked on understanding what it means to dissolve the road. So I think once he understands that, this is a later day topic, and I was moving to the next agenda item.
Well, we, we have to take care of this one before we move to that.
Got it, and we are not ready for a waiver today.
So we're, we're just, we're.
It's just gonna happen.
Action, no action.
No action.
No action on item number eight, which is a variant.
It's not friends.
So we will now go to item number nine, which is discuss, consider replat of Albright Edition nine and ten located in Manzay County Road, thirty-seven twenty-four in Precinct Three. And you brought additional drawings, which I don't believe we sh- I don't know that we can usually.
So do we have everything to do the replat? Oh, we don't yet.
All sign for prices. Just had three lots on, this one that you brought today is two lot. This ain't supposed to go to the court. This is, this is just drawing. And now we gotta go through all four miles again. Now we gotta go through review bill service again, because they all quote three lots, and they now have to match, they have to match your draw.
I mean, they didn't quote three lots. They took in three oh three Van Nett County Road. And one of them, I think that the stuff that Boney says, it's long, this lot seemed up at least one acre in size, we will serve you. Um, so I believe the letters were okay. Um, and the only reason we have, this is just, uh, a mock-up, this is Bison Surveys and preliminary, uh, for us to consider today, and the only reason is because, again, the easements and the private road weren't put on what we paid for already, and the big, all the fancy things. Um, but I didn't find that out until Monday. Um, so I did mess up it yesterday to say, hey, let's reprove, we can have us back to you with the whole laminate and blah, blah, today. Um, if possible, uh, my family filed us, uh, requests to be on the agenda, I think, back in the twenty-third, before multiple surgeries where it happened, happening, is the only reason they had come down and notify everything, get it to y'all, so we could make it for October first with the deadline to be here today. Um, so you have all the laminate and all the thing, we've done all the step, but again, it was the oversight and then, um, Mr. Abbott said, without any surveys or, you know, detailed information, he did the best he could. Um, but what we have provided is not good for all that easements and things you're gonna need anyway. So I knew I was gonna have to bring you another set this afternoon. Um, Bison is prepared to knock it out, get it back over here. Uh.
Well.
Y'all accept or, you know, give us further direction.
I'm one of those that I like everything to be done before I say we're gonna do it or even ask these guys to vote on it. Because, and, and I'm not saying against you or nothing, but, uh, the will call letters, I, do, do you have on the water and, and everything?
Look back, read it, come back over.
Right, right.
Because of that, they find.
The. Yeah, the, the deal, the deal on it though is, is, what was the, the, uh, word? I, I don't recommend doing this. Uh, I, I'm gonna say deny, but with the conditions that when they present us everything in order, that, that fee that they paid already be waived. And they don't have to pay that fee again.
Would it be appropriate to just table it for two weeks?
I think, I think we need to probably just, it would, would that, just table it until they get, or we have to? Okay. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
What, what's going on with you? What's, like, are, are you in some kind of time crunch?
Just, hey, I'm like ill-vented and trying to get the estate planning in, so there are three brothers and, and the parents just can't rest in peace until their estate is done, and this whole road costs you more than their whole homestead.
Right.
You know, just when you're in that age and mindset of, I'm trying to wrap up things, um,
Okay.
And it's just, you know, keep trying to get it done as quickly as we can, while fulfilling all the boxes. I promise you, we definitely have all those, all letters, all well-served letter. And I made sure I have a tax authority, so all the taxes are paid. You have all those, the hard copies needed, um, and.
They're not here right now.
They are, yes.
They're not here right now. They haven't gone through Keegan to get approval and make sure everything's there as of this morning.
Yes, sir.
No, they haven't.
Okay.
Not with that plat right there.
So you just. The plan are addressed in all, it's one ten acre track, and that's how the bill served letters are addressed. Is to three oh three Van Nett County, three seven zero four, that's in a ten acre track being replatted. It doesn't talk about three, three acre tracks or two, six and a half or three and a half. It doesn't say any of that. I, I did see the film, um, and again, license plate, you can pull the trigger. They got the, um, easements all added, all the things they did, the first time, again, in a birth, you know, wasn't, um, anyone's intent.
Well, I apologize, but I, I can't with good faith go along with it until it's presented to us and we have it in front of us.
Yes.
Uh.
So, so.
You know, you're gonna wa- waive the following.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm making a motion that we deny this replat, but when they come back with this new one, the filing fee is, is waived.
All right, that's your motion?
Yes, sir. Is that good enough?
Yeah.
Then I replat and waive filing fee.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion passes. We'll see you again.
Do you get your precautions, like send everything in? Do I need to provide copies of all the bill letters next time, so I don't have to?
You know, only the keeper.
You can see with that.
Yeah.
When we put around, when he, if I see, it can prove a letter, then we will use all. Right. All right. But in writing, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm, any problems with going to two lots, six and a half, three and a half?
That, you just have to take that up with Brian.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's fine.
But you, you shouldn't have any trouble if they have the road frontage and will, and will serve limits. You shouldn't have any trouble with that.
Yep.
I mean, I don't, you shouldn't have, right?
That's, that's what I suspected.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right.
Your turn.
Uh, item number ten, discuss considering a local agreement between, uh, County Commissioners Court of Manzay County and the Andrews Center for one year, October first, twenty twenty-five, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. This is our annual agreement with Andrews Center for services. Uh, it, there's no change. It's, uh, thirty-six thousand or three thousand, thirty-six thousand a year, three thousand dollars a month. It's for, uh, uh, services that they provide.
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by, uh, Richard Phillips. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion passes. Item number eleven is our consent agenda. Consent agenda, our items to the routine by Commissioners Court will be acted in one motion. There will be no separate uh, discussion of these items unless the county judge or commissioner request an item be removed from the consent agenda considered separately. And I'd just like to, uh, clarify, item number eight is discuss, consider additional five hundred thousand dollar bond for each judge presiding in a court of guardianship and probate proceedings effective September first, twenty twenty-five in accordance to Senate Bill, uh, three eighty-seven. This was, this legislature passed that the judges doing guardianships and probate have to have a five hundred thousand dollar bond. So, uh, and that's, that's just what we, we did. We just have to bump the term bond for Judge Winters and myself. So is there, uh, any other items that need to be discussed on or pulled out? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion passes. Item number left, twelve. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
We'll just stay.
No, we're not gonna stay here all day, cause we don't get a second.
Second.
All right.
Second, yeah.
Motion made, saying all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. It is, uh, ten, what is that, forty?
That's true.
Ten forty-three. Thank you, everybody, for participating.
We found the teaching. That's how we will be ahead of the reporting, so plus, that's probably extend the value of other, we don't need to extend, but you guys might want to see a lot. That'd be helpful for all.
We can, we're gonna have it back on the agenda for a public, yeah. Yeah, so keep an eye on that, because we'll, uh, we will, we'll bring that back before the, you know, for a public hearing.
Twenty seconds. The twenty-second, our next amazing, our next man, yes. We're glad you're here.
I don't. All, you can download, you know, we hit the, uh, which first it brought you, uh, councilor, like, right? I just go on the website, I have it myself.